Good evening, it's September 12th. This is the September 12th meeting of the Haberford Township Planning Commission. Meeting's now called to order at 7:14 PM. Could you please call the roll?
Okay, you can hear me now. Okay, Mr. Shannon.
Present.
Mr. Capuzzi.
Here.
Mr. Fiar De Mondo.
Here.
Mr. Montressor.
Here.
Ms. Phillips.
Here.
Maggie Dobbs and Steve Welch advised us they would not be able to make it tonight. Let's stand for the flag salute. General Agent, to the flag, United States of America, the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united in justice for all. First item on the agenda is a sketch plan for 978 Township Line Road. This is for a commercial, for construction of a commercial mixed-use development on what is presented as an existing vacant lot with a first-floor sports facility and two stories of residential units above. The district is an R1A residential zoning district.
Mr. Shannon, I just wanted to note on the record that the applicant will not be present tonight and has asked just a few minutes ago to be put on the October agenda for the planning commission.
If a motion's necessary, I'll move that we continue.
It's not necessary.
Not necessary, just their request.
Just their request, yep.
Next item on the agenda is the proposed zoning ordinance amendments to Chapter 182, which we have reviewed before, and there's some changes, clarifications. Are there any comments from the planning commission? Are there any comments from Jamie?
Would anybody like me to go through the red line? Yep, yep, okay, great. I can do that. So on our first page, the only red line edit was that we are a first-class township. So on to the second page, in discussion with Commissioner Forstegrop, the abandonment definition was requested to be added to clarify. This was more or less written into the regulations saying that if an operation ceased to continue after six months, it would be considered abandoned. And just having this clearly defined was a request. We also adjusted the building definition.
I'm sorry, could you clarify what what the commissioner was requesting?
In the in the non-conforming use section, it is mentioned, although abandonment was not expressly defined, it was mentioned that after an operation would cease to exist for a period of more than six months, it would be considered abandoned. And that language was already existing in our code. However, this definition was requested to expressly be added to this ordinance.
So that's first, the first definition, abandonment?
Abandonment.
Addition?
Yes, that's an addition. Mm-hmm.
I have a question about the word.
Sure.
Is the phrase intent to abandon synonymous with deemed abandoned? Or is there some, is that a notice thing, or is there some lead time there? Or is at the end of the six-month period deemed abandoned?
Believe that at the end of the six-month period, it's deemed abandoned.
Okay, so you're.
Deemed, well, I wouldn't, I wouldn't. No, I the test is intent to, is there intent to abandon at any time? And they're saying it's six months, we'll deem it.
Deem it.
Intending to abandon, but the, I presume it's burden shift, all that sort of thing.
Gotcha.
On that one, though, I would make a minor just for style, the first one to read more like the later section. I would start with the word if, this is just style. If deletes which? That's all.
Replace, replace which with if, is that what you're saying?
No, start the sentence with if.
Okay.
So that it reads, if a non-conforming use of land or building ceases operation for a continuous period of more than six months, then this shall be deemed to be an intent to abandon such use. So you're starting with the word if, it's really minor, but you're starting with the word if and then deleting the word which. That's all. Same content.
Any objections from the rest of the planning commission? Okay.
I have a comment about building coverage. I think.
Did you want to cover building, the red line part of building first, or?
No, I'm okay with the definition of building.
Okay.
Okay. Could I ask a question about abandonment before we get to building?
Yeah, go ahead.
I haven't, I've not quite understood. So I'll ask my question. Why is it land or building or other structure? Why do we not include other structure? Because I've not quite understood the distinctions between structure and building. But there are places where we talk about buildings or other structures and it may not be critical, but just was wondering if there was a reason for leaving out structures here.
Well, if you look at the definition of building, it's a structure that has enclosed walls and roof. Whereas the definition of a structure is basically anything that is man-made that's on the ground. So I don't know. Usually, or most likely, if something is non-conforming, it's a building, which by definition is a structure, but not all structures are buildings.
Well, it'd have a non-conforming use of a structure. It's not a building.
I think the discussion was more of how do you abandon a structure? So like a fence? At what point do you consider that deemed?
I'm thinking, I'm thinking more of somebody who runs a, let's say, a gardening business. And they were a woodworking kind of business, and they do work outside. And that's a non-conforming use. And they have a little shed or something where they, it's not affixed to the land.
So the use would be abandoned, and then this covered. I think in thinking it through, it's the use or the building that are going to be abandoned rather than a structure, I think was how we thought it out.
And what about a use of a structure that's not affixed?
Give me an example that's applicable, and I can.
What, what kind of structures not affixed?
I couldn't think of a structure that would be deemed abandoned, that would really qualify. Does that make sense?
I'm sorry?
I couldn't think of a structure that was going to be deemed abandoned that would really qualify.
Oh, it's the use of the structure.
And we're covered.
If, if you had a parking lot that was a non-conforming use, okay? The parking lot is a structure. If you abandon the use of that parking lot as a parking lot, you're abandoning it, you're abandoning the structure, not a building.
You're most likely abandoning the actual use. So the parking lot's an accessory?
Only, not if it's a primary use.
If it's just a parking lot. How many of those are there going to be?
Think the new library, okay?
Yep.
They're building a parking lot.
They are building just a parking lot.
So if at some point in time, the library stops using that as a parking lot, okay? It's a non-conforming use, because it's in a residential district, and there's no building on it that would be considered an accessory structure, right?
That is.
That's the primary.
That is one example there, yep.
So that's the only instance I can think of, that a structure could be abandoned and not.
Without the building or the use being abandoned, correct?
That's a, that's a.
It's an anomaly, I'm not sure, do you want to include structure in this for that instance? That's fine, but that is the reason why I did not.
If you were to add the word building or structure into the abandonment, it's not going to hurt anything, right?
It's not. It's not what?
It's not going to hurt anything.
No.
It may never apply, but.
It would be rare. But it is about uses, I mean, the sentence is about uses.
Right.
So I think it helps to have that in.
Okay. I, is that, you're okay? Building coverage, okay. Under the definition of building, we say any structure having enclosed walls and roof, attached deck should also be included. Then we go on to say either buried in or attached to the land, okay? When you look at building coverage, I think we have to say the footprint of a building and attached deck and eliminate the words in the second sentence at or above the ground level. Because we're saying a building can be buried. So you have a buried building, an underground garage, that counts as building coverage. It should count as building coverage since it's a building. Make sense?
Sure.
Okay. Can I continue?
Sure.
All right. I just had some minor word changes, I'll just give those to you. But at the bottom of page three. Okay.
On building coverage, if the measurement is more than 18 inches, does the consequence of that get addressed somewhere else, or does it need to be addressed here?
So it's, it's, it's like.
You simply automatically.
It's exempt if it, if it's less than eight, like if it's the 18 inches, if it's more than that, it.
Automatically.
Correct.
You don't get to cut off the first 18 inches. Okay, bottom of page three, all the way down at paragraph 3B. Residential garage, private garage in excess of 18 feet in width. The last line, the principal, all right. Principal structure, I think that should say principal building. We're talking about the separation between a residential private garage. Has to be 20 feet further back from the street line.
From the principal building, yep.
Principal building, otherwise a driveway, okay.
Yep.
And then, and then under sub-paragraph one, same thing. The word structure should be building. And, and page four, like in the middle of paragraph B at the top, B1. The fifth line down that says structures. Again, I think that should be buildings.
10 feet from all other structures? Is that what you're talking?
It should be 10 feet further from all other buildings.
So I actually disagree.
Okay.
So the 10 feet farther back from the front street line than the rear portion of the main building is, is the 10 feet from the building? And then anything, any other accessory structure that is in the yard, it must be 10 feet from?
But a structure can be a driveway. So how can your garage be 10 feet further back than your driveway? Unless you have grass between the end of your driveway and the front of your garage.
Well, now a driveway is a structure.
It is.
The way we've been, hmm. What if we?
I mean, what, I think what we were saying there is 10 feet from all the buildings, which would mean you can't have a shed within 10 feet of a garage. Okay? But you certainly could have a sidewalk within 10 feet of a garage. Have a patio.
I have a. What about a pool? What do we do with that?
What about a what?
A pool.
A pool?
We want that, we want that 10-foot setback, right?
Yeah, I don't, I don't know if I do or not.
I just wanted to jump back because under these garage headings, you were changing a lot of the structure verbiage back to building. And I had a question about carports, because when we moved into our house, it actually had a prefab carport that is no longer there. But they do exist occasionally. So I was just, because they don't have a wall, I was just making sure that by going from building, from structure to building, you weren't getting rid of anything that would help prevent an excessive use of like one walled-in garage and then two bays of carport next to it, or something like that.
Well, a car, a carport, in my opinion, is in a building if it doesn't have sides. But if it's attached to the main building, then it has to comply with all the setback requirements of the zoning district.
Okay. Just checking.
All right, so okay, a pool is a situation where you might want the pool to be 10 feet from a.
I know that, that a pool language is 10, I'm just going to have to go back in and check, but I know it's 10 feet from any property line. I just don't know if if we have anything in for accessory structures that would be 10 feet from a pool, but.
10 feet from the property line or any structure? Or any building?
I will have to look.
I mean, if it's not there, we can, if the pool is the one we're concerned about.
I mean, I'm, that was the only one I thought of off the top of my head right now, yeah. Did everybody see the comment from John Walco on page three regarding? So it was bottom of page three, it was subsection, so it's A3, where garages in excess of 18 feet in height will be permitted when authorized as a special exception by the zoning hearing board. And his comment was, the zoning hearing board shall find that. He said, I have the only comment I have is related to the private garage provision that provides that the zoning hearing board shall find that the proposed structure will not provide habitable space. He's not sure what habitable space means. We don't have that defined in our ordinance. And his thought is the original second-floor habitable space language made it that nobody could actually occupy the second story, which was the intention after last month's meeting. And that's why no water was to go on the second floor. But if the intent is to stop someone from living in a garage, should it state that the structure will not provide for overnight accommodation? Or should habitable be defined? So I just wanted to put this out there to everybody. It was something he wanted to bring up.
Before we delve into that, I'm starting to get confused. Are we talking about a garage, whether it's freestanding or attached to the house, or just one of those instances?
We don't, we don't separate them. Yeah, we don't separate them. Private gar. Certainly, I mean, they certainly could, right? If there was in excess of 18, I mean, to, and then it would become in excess of 18 feet in height, correct? So.
So if we don't define habitable, then it's up to the zoning board to decide what's habitable.
Correct.
So and again, in my opinion, habitable, it makes sense that you might have electricity in a detached garage. You may have even water supply. I think what makes it habitable is if you have like sanitary sewer facilities. So I, I think the zoning board is competent enough to figure that out.
Okay.
When we looked at paragraph two right below that, we're, we're letting the zoning board decide whether or not the height is in keeping with the character of the surrounding neighborhood. So we're not defining character of the surrounding neighborhood. So they have to use their judgment and stuff like that. I don't have any other major comments.
I did want to just follow up that on page four, section subsections. Well, I guess it was subsection D. While the planning commission did not agree and was not in support of the decorative landscape features, I will say that the township manager did review this and felt that no, no accessory structure shall be in the front yard. In the front yard, so. Wanted to put that out there because I did get that comment in the event that this comes back. And if we don't have anything further on that section, I'm, we can move on to section 182-802, non-conforming uses for buildings and structures, which is what we added. I can go line by line, or, or we can just go with questions here. What, what do you guys prefer?
Probably line by line is better. I just have a quick preliminary comment, which is, there's a lot in this section that is there's a lot of stuff in the section that is not included in the, in this iteration, which is okay. I just wanted to be clear on the record that when we approve, if we approve something, we're only approving explicit, express changes, not agreeing to or ratifying anything else in the, anywhere in the code that is not a specific change. Just dealing with the changes.
Correct.
Proposed changes.
All right. So we did, let's see, we're on, I'm going to skip down to page five. Non-conforming use, and we added of a building or structure. Moving along, under non-conforming buildings, we have just A and B there, the enlargement or alteration complies with the area and bulk regulations of the district in which it's located, as well as the existing building in any addition comply with the off-street parking regulations for the use of the building.
Now, I know it was said that we don't need A, but I.
It's repetitive, it was felt.
Yes.
Yep.
But I see different places where area and bulk regulations are treated differently than, well, or described differently or expressed differently than height. I can see how height is, well, height setback yard and coverage. They overlap area and bulk, but they don't seem to be synonymous. Say that's subject to others' views. I know others feel all of that is area and bulk regulations. But setback in area and bulk regulation is yard?
Yes.
Coverage might be. Are they defined in the code?
So area and bulk regulations, that, that term is not. But, but each, you know, setback, yard, those things are. However, area and bulk regulations does encompass all of those things, plus maybe a little bit more, a lot of times, so.
Including setbacks.
Each zoning district has a subsection C, which is entitled area and bulk regulations. And it lists lot size, street frontage, lot width, building coverage, front yard, side yards, height, impervious coverage, rear yard. So each zoning district has a category which lists bulk and area requirements. Area and bulk regulations. So I think anytime the, the body of the zoning ordinance references area and bulk regulations, it's defined by each, within each individual zoning district.
Remember saying the last time we met, if that can be referenced this, what would you call this book? This is your zoning book?
Well, this is a zoning book.
I know, but remember last time we got into a little disagreement with how that area and bulk regulation requirement should be described? And all I was saying was, can that be referenced to what you just read?
Basically, it says, bulk and area regulations of the district in which the property is located.
Okay.
So it does reference, you have to know what zoning district you're in.
Yep.
To know what the bulk and area requirements are.
Yes.
Okay. So you can't say, it would take forever to say, in R1 district, see page four.
No, 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 no. But isn't there a general reference to what each zoning district requires? Not in detail, just to reference where it is.
Yes, it's, and see the forest where the trees. I don't see a problem, but.
Okay.
But I've been too close to this for so long. I mean, area and bulk regulations are what it says in paragraph C of the zoning district.
Would, would it help if it said something like, as set forth in?
In what?
In the district, in the regulations, area and bulk regulations.
For each district. Yeah, it says that.
For each applicable district, something, if you want something more specific.
Of the district in which it is located, how more specific can it be?
That's what I thought, okay. Yeah.
Okay. So, so moving on to page six.
Yeah, I think that, that's an understood term when you say the district.
Yeah, it's.
Talking about the district, the zoning district.
I know what it means.
I think I do.
One of the things I wanted to point out for on page six, under discontinuance, I think that there was some discussion around the voluntary demolition, raising or removal of a non-conforming building or structure. And then this or portion thereof. So we've, in discussing this with John Walco. And then this or portion thereof, um, so we've, in discussing this with John Walco, it wasn't, it wasn't the matter of, or portion thereof and a removal of a, of a. Of a porch from the front of the house and then, you know, something that's conform, you know, like if something conforming was proposed for the back of the house. And something happened that was. A replacement of a part of a, of a nonconforming porch at the front of the house. It wasn't going to be considered abandoned in that sense. So the intention, the intention of this was the demolition to the foundation, um, that we see frequently, and then build back full, you know. Fully and not, not really falling under any jurisdiction of, like, demolition because the foundation would remain. So our intention here is to say, including the removal of, to the foundation of the building. So if, i- if the intention is to come in and have a nonconforming house demolished to the foundation, this will still qualify that they voluntarily demolished the building. Is this clear? I'm not sure that I explained that very well, but, um, that portion thereof was when they leave it just, when they take it down just to the foundation, and that this was unclear to everyone. So to be more clear was to say, if they're removing the entire building with the exception of the foundation, we're still going to, to qualify the voluntary demolition of the removal of the building to the foundation as the removal of the, of the building, of the nonconforming building.
I understand you correct to say it the opposite way.
Yeah.
They can't use the foundation as a hook.
Yes.
Continue.
There you go. I'm sorry, I'm not explaining this well, but.
It's okay.
It's, it's a voluntary demolition of, of a nonconforming building or structure. Shall, shall be considered an abandonment of the nonconformity.
And we had a situation in our neighborhood, had to be at least five, six years ago, where a property owner had a nonconforming detached garage, which was like falling apart. So they, they raised the portion above ground and were going to build a new garage when the foundation and township told them, no, that they have to move the garage foundation walls so that they comply with the setback requirements. So even, even though we're just adding this now, the township has previously required this to be done.
I understand, and I agree.
Okay. Um, also on chapter, or page six, I don't know where chapter came from, um, so in subsection D three, there was a, a lot of discussion about the, the existing case law that may be out there, um, the idea that this may create a legal issue, um, if we were to remove this option. John Walco did say he reviewed, reviewed this while we weren't, you know, making any proposed changes, but he viewed it as, um, a, a policy of the township that was in there for, for whatever reason and purpose, that it, there was no issue with it, um, up to this point, and the removal of the option does not create a legal issue. There is no existing case law, um, to that effect, but it could create a hardship for an owner. He did advise that if it was to be kept, he felt that criteria for a special exception is, is greatly encouraged here. So I know that there was not a consensus by the planning commission on this the other evening. I, I do want to say that that was his feedback that he provided, and I hope that helps clarify a few things for everyone.
Sort of. What he's saying is that the nonconforming uses are constitutionally protected for the existing use, and removal of this exception of permitting a change in the nonconforming use to another nonconforming use, even in this limited, somewhat limited way, is not required by the Pennsylvania Constitution.
Is not required.
Which is to, which is not to say that you can't have limitations or have expansions of nonconforming uses or, um, it's up to the township. It's the policy of the township. It is not a constitutional requirement.
Correct.
So taking it out is not hardship or no hardship. Hardships are dealt with under variances. There's no such thing as a hard, well, anything could be a hardship. Zoning is a hardship. It takes away from the, really, every zoning regulation puts a limitation on my use of my land and yours and all of ours. So one, you have a right to a nonconforming use that you had before the existing code was enacted or amended, and that's all you have. And if you abandon it, we have a lot of provisions in here, including some that are not included, to talk about the township's policy of eliminating nonconforming uses lawfully, but you can't take them. The Constitution in Pennsylvania protects them. It protects enlargements or expansions under the doctrine of natural expansion, um, and, but it also says the township can regulate them as we are doing. So the question is, should it be the policy of the township? First question is, should it be the policy of the township to have, uh, this exception in which the zoning hearing board, without our review or anybody's review, should the zoning hearing board be able to grant special exceptions which add a nonconforming use of the same classification? So the first question is, should you have anything like that in here? And I would say, given that we're amending the zoning ordinance, and it's going to change a lot of districts and probably create a lot of nonconforming uses, this becomes, which, that's a herein after change which would trigger this provision. And, and I think given that, number one, given that it would be best to leave this out for now, and when we revise the code, deal with this issue in a more thoroughgoing way. Secondly, there've been an awful lot of, I don't know when this was enacted, and I've never heard, I've asked over the years for why this is in there. What is it trying to do? And, uh, prior, very previous zoning officers did not know, and administrators did not know. So nobody seems to know why it's there. We can all speculate. The other problem, the second problem is, if we want something like this, if we want to say, well, somehow, either by the commissioners or by the zoning hearing board, we should allow a new use, um, then it ought to be clear what we're talking about. And as John said, John Walco, there ought to be clear criteria, not just, uh, of the same classification, and I don't know exactly what of the same classification means. It just should be clear. Other townships, I believe Lower Marion has no provision like this. I, I believe, I haven't studied it closely, but a quick look, I didn't see anything like this. Many townships have nothing, and some townships have something like this, but I haven't found any that's so broad and general. They all say things like, well, not all, some of them say things like, um, the same or lower, I'm sorry, same or a higher classification, not lower, and not, uh, I don't know the phrasing, but the quality of the neighborhood would not be diminished in any way. There's lots of things that could be written in. There's been lots of developments in the case law since, if this was written in nineteen seventy-four, or eighty-eight, or any time in the last fifty years, it would, there's been a lot of law. And I think if we're going to revise this and try to put in the right kind of criteria, we should, like, do it in a systematic way, part of revising of the code. And if we want to do it sooner, then have a little group of yourself and Jamie and others who volunteer to revise it. People feel that's important. So number one, I don't see it as necessary. I think it gives, the overriding issue, I, I don't see why a person with a nonconforming use has more rights than a person who just has property and owns their property and doesn't have a nonconforming use. You lose your nonconforming use, you, you can, or you can keep your nonconforming use. Why you should be able to have a new use without getting a variance or a conditional use, I don't know. None of us who own property and don't have nonconforming uses can do that. We have to go in and get a variance, special exception, conditional use, something that's authorized in the code and laid out where you can do that. You know, if you want a church or a, a cell tower, can be put in by special exception. Those are specific things. We, there's nothing like that here. Ultimately, it's the use of, it's the, um, to me, it's the role of the planning, of the township commissioners to decide zoning in each zoning district, and every exception to that can create mischief.
So what's the feeling of the rest of the planning commission on the?
So I, just so people it's clear what I'm talking about, I would delete. I've lost it. Give me one second, please. I would delete. In sub one. It starts out, a nonconforming use shall not be changed to any other use, period. I'm sorry. A nonconforming use shall not be changed to any other use, delete the comma, other than a conforming use, period. Delete except as otherwise permitted in subsection D three below. Sub two, I don't really object to, it just seems redundant, and, and I always get concerned about redundancy because someone will then argue, well, you must have meant something, you must have meant something different here than the general rule. But it seems like the general rule covers this unless you feel differently. And lastly, I would just delete sub three in its entirety with an asterisk or some note in the record that this will be revisited.
Given that the guidance was to establish criteria for the special exception, the words used here greatly encouraged, and I don't know that we're in a position tonight to do that, I agree with the logic of deleting the provision and then dealing with it when you change, update the zoning code.
Okay.
Jamie, paragraph, subparagraph three, that David is asking to be deleted. The previous wording had a sentence in there, um, when authorized as a special exception by the zoning hearing board following review and recommendation by the planning commission. Why was that sentence taken out? Do you know?
We haven't been, so when we originally, John Walco and I went through these, this entire section, we did remove that because that's not been the operating procedure, basically, of the township to send that to the planning commission. I don't really have, like, in, in any other, aside from a nonconformity, any other sections where I know that the planning commission would get review of something that would be a zoning hearing board application. So for consistency's sake, we removed that, and because of policy here at the township, you know, John Walco informing that that was not happening and nor had it ever, so we removed it.
So, so the township policy can override the written law?
The, I mean, technically.
Yeah.
No.
Okay.
Okay, but it was, so, I mean, can I speak to what was done before my time? Not really, but yeah.
You are. Does anybody recall? I mean, I, I recall many matters being presented and.
Did nonconforming, like a special exception for a nonconforming use come before the planning commission?
I, I can't sum it. Angelo remembers better than I, but.
Well, the, the, the gas station, Grassland and Eagle, they came to us.
As a sketch plan.
As a sketch plan, right.
But that's a different procedure that is part of the SADO.
That's what I mentioned to you at the beginning of the meeting, before we met. I, I think it should be the township policy, since we can make a policy, it seems like, that any, any plan that has to go to the zoning hearing board that eventually has become a land development plan should come to this board first.
I, I only say this in general, you know, other municipalities I've, I've worked in, typically, an applicant would be directed to go through the zoning hearing board first to see if they will be granted relief before coming to the planning commission for any kind of feedback on a plan. If the, if the relief is not even possibly going to be granted, if it's a use variance that they're certainly not going to get, they're not going to take further steps, um, is, is typically the approach I've seen in other municipalities, so.
Yeah, I just think that the advantages of coming to the planning commission first as a sketch plan, number one, we're not approving or disapproving anything.
Of course, and as a sketch plan, and we have that process in place, I think that that procedure is very valid, and I think it's, it's a very good process to have. That does not preclude the applicant from coming or, you know, initially to the township and just putting in a zoning hearing board application.
But the township can set that as its policy, is all I'm saying. If we can set policy by not following the rules that exist now, why can't we set a policy that says, this is how we're going to operate and have it for township?
And sometimes applicants just drop off whatever application they deem i- is their first necessary step, right? So.
Yeah, but if you tell them the first step is to go to the planning commission, that's what they have to do.
If I get the chance to tell them that, I would do that, yes. The policy would be made clear, right?
Angelo, if I understand you correctly, that you feel that many times, if not all the time, there'd be a benefit to the applicant to come here first because it might help them achieve what they want when you have to go to the county?
I, this.
Or not. I mean, a case in point, and the gas, or the bank on Eagle and Darby Road, they went through the zoning board first, okay? The zoning board says, you had to put a right turn lane in from southbound Darby Road onto westbound Eagle Road, okay? That was a condition of approval, if you will, okay? They got into the engineering, they went through land development, and they discovered, gee, that's a waste of time and money because the distance that you can put a right turn lane is so short, you can only get one or two cars in there, it's serving no purpose. So instead of doing that, let's, uh, increase the radius for that turn so it's a more of a free-moving turn, and that's what they did. And technically, if you don't follow the conditions of the zoning hearing board order, you got to go back to them and ask them to revise it. That didn't happen because common sense said that it makes more sense to do this than to do that. But all I'm saying is, if the zoning board had that input from us, and, and the, the nice thing about coming here first with a sketch plan is, the township engineer gets a chance to review the plan. So we have those comments to consider, whereas if they go to the zoning board first, guess who doesn't see the plan? The township engineer. So that's, that's my argument. And if it's township policy that sets up the procedure for how we do, um, uh, land developments and, and zoning approvals, I think we can adopt that policy. We adopted a policy two years ago, they only meet once a month, incidentally.
I don't disagree with you. I think it's a great policy, and I can do every, make every effort to make that clear to applicants before they put an application in.
I, I would like to second Angelo's. I know it's not a motion, but I, I would like to second his proposal. I was, just as he was saying it, I was about to say, we have the advantage of, uh, an engineering company, including Chuck Faulkner, but also traffic engineers, all, all those issues that engineers deal with, we have that resource. The township has that resource. The zoning hearing board does not, as Angelo was saying, and.
I absolutely agree. I think the, that the value of a sketch plan, it is, is really, it's really high. I unfortunate, and I will, like I. I unfortunate, and I will, like I said, now that I'm here and I am aware of this and I can try to make that our township policy, I still cannot control exactly when and how an applicant does put an application in. So if I get the chance to communicate with them prior to that, I will make that very clear.
Don't those applications get submitted to the zoning officer?
Yep.
So the zoning officer can say?
Know they're coming in before they come in.
Well, they present them, and you say, you don't have your traffic study, you don't have this, you don't have that, and you got to go to the planning commission first. I would like to add one other point in support of Angelo's thought. I know there've been many times where, well, in support of Angelo's thought, or suggestion, strong suggestion. The, when it comes to us first, we can, we do say sometimes in land development and other, mainly in land development, to my recollection, we can say, we have flexibility. We can say, well, you know, this setback you're supposed to get, or this parking change you need, you really ought to get that from the zoning hearing board before you come back to us. Or we might say, we can review this and make our recommendation based on what we see so far. So we have flexibility to say, go to the zoning hearing board if it's more appropriate that that happens first. I just think coming to us first and letting us make that call is a better approach.
I do agree. I think that them, an applicant submitting a sketch plan and coming here first prior to going to zoning hearing board is the correct move.
Jamie, if I'm reading between the lines correctly, the real issue is that, in your position, it's either untenable, unfeasible to reject an application that comes in if it's zoning first and to ask them to go back and come to the planning commission first.
If it's a complete application. Yep.
As Angelo was saying, if the law says, go to the planning commission first, or go to wherever first, that'll be the instruction. That'll be what's online. That'll be what they see. And if they, oh, that's deed that they fill out and sign that says, we agree with these conditions and regulations, and we agree to comply with all of them, that could be on that list. Easy peasy. All that said, I think all of that supports deleting this section here. And part of our thinking on the revision can include whether it ought to, whether a nonconforming use changes to other nonconforming uses should go to the planning commission first or not.
As of now, I have removed that section. Is everyone present tonight in consensus with that? Okay.
Is there consensus deleting it?
To delete it, yes. Any other, any other comments on the ordinance amendment?
I think you did a really good job in taking all our comments from the last meeting and incorporating them. So thank you for that.
Sure.
And also for drafting. I find this very hard. So thank you.
I've had some practice.
Yes.
I echo those comments. Has the township hired a zoning officer yet?
We have hired a zoning officer. He began on September 3rd. His name is Jonathan Mount. He is a registered architect. He has many, many years of experience with other municipalities as a zoning officer, as a building code inspector, as a plan reviewer. He's a jack of all trades, is someone I actually have had the opportunity to work with for a few years prior to coming here. And he's hit the ground running and doing a really great job. All that said, I will be keeping planning commission and planning things and subdivision and land development completely in my wheelhouse, just so you guys know. Zoning hearing board and that caseload is very busy. So we've chosen to separate those, you know, to two people. But obviously, any questions on zoning, he can jump in, and he is a great resource for the township.
Do we have minutes that we're approving? I believe we do.
Do. You have two sets of minutes to approve. It's going to be the July 12th and August 8th minutes.
I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes or ask first if there are any changes.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve the planning commission minutes, meeting minutes from July 11th, 2024, and August 8th, 2024, as written.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing done. The minutes are approved.
No, I just, I mentioned the bank project at the corner of Eagle and Darby Road. There's an application for the zoning board to put in another gas station and convenience store on that corner. And I believe their hearing for that will be next week or October. Jamie, do you know?
They actually continue to next meeting, which will be on the 19th of September. So their hearing has been continued. It'll be next Thursday.
Next Thursday.
Yes, next Thursday. Their meetings do start at 7:45.
And one quick question. Any movement on the comp plan?
Yes. I am hopeful that we will be reaching out to the finishing committee in the next few weeks with a draft, yes.
Okay, great. I'm sorry.
Have a question, Lou.
Did you say finishing committee?
There is a finishing committee.
Oh, I didn't know that.
Yeah, I, yeah, before my time as well, but that's the directive. Okay.
After the planning commission submitted their comments to the board of commissioners, they establish a finishing committee whose responsibility is to take everybody's comments and put it into a format that can presented to the board of commissioners so they can have their public hearing.
Two of our members are on the finishing committee.
Angelo and Maggie are on the finishing committee, as well as Commissioner Hart, Commissioner McCluskey, Commissioner Cavender, and Commissioner Gondak. And I believe Commissioner Holmes did want to participate as well.
In the new business department, I had a chance to, I was in the office the other day and saw Maggie, I mean Margie Buchanan, and she seems very fully recovered and in good spirits. So we can, we're all happy about that. If there's no other new business, then I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. I'll move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor? We are adjourned. Thank you all. Thank you all.